Oh, may the Lord please, please stand in the Pledge of Ladies.
The Pledge of Ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please silence phones, pagers, electronic devices. Item number one, or I'm sorry, item number two, a citizen concerns. Anything besides Kevin Green that would like to speak?
All right. Good afternoon. Kevin Green, Director of Slindon District Health Department. Just a quick COVID-19 update. Right now, as far as in Woodbury County, we're at about a 7.7% positivity rate, which means all the tests done, about a little over 7% are coming back as positive. Our case counts have fluctuated anyway from three a day up to about 25. That's some of the data we released, so I said that's been fairly consistent. We're waiting for the day that we really hit the zero mark, but that's a little bit in the future. But the big emphasis right now is simply on the vaccine rollout. Anything that you've seen, we have more and more sources for the vaccine. Drilling Pharmacy, Hy-Vee, I think Walgreens has been providing it. Today, I was just told there's a potential Walmart would have it, in addition to the vaccine that's allocated for us. Right now, our numbers, I was just kind of looking before I came down, it says that 6.73% of our Woodbury County population has been fully vaccinated, which in that case means they've received their two doses. We have about 23,000 doses that have been administered, so we've got about 20% of the population has at least started the process. One of the priority areas right now, we have gone through the education with the schoolteachers, the social workers, those Tier One entities, law enforcement, we pretty much, they're still eligible if they want to sign up for the clinics, but now we moved on to that Tier Two. And so actually yesterday, we had our first dose clinic, we had a lot of it, which is a disabled audience with their caregivers. We had a lot of those individuals come through, which we were pleased to see. Any of you that have gone to the clinic, it's pretty impressive. I call it the wheelchair corral. There's courtesy people in wheelchairs out front, so that anybody needs assistance, they can be supported and gone through the clinic. We had the situation yesterday where somebody dropped off somebody at the curb and went to park the car, and they got up to the front door and they said, "Where did such and such go?" And I said, "I don't know." Well, the courtesy person went ahead with the individual, and they were already in through the clinic. They were at the point that the person was getting the vaccine before their chauffeur could get them parked at the car and that, and so they were thrilled with some of those things. So I, kudos to the volunteers and the other staff that are out there working. Today, we're finishing up at 6:00 with another 1,800 doses for the second, so our percentage should actually be going up. We will continue to do this, but our next focus right now is we're kind of taking, our next public clinic will be the 25th of March, but right now, we're focusing on the manufacturing facilities. Those are the entities that cannot social distance more than six feet just because of the basis of their operation. And those are some of the individuals that were most highly impacted with the disease last spring. So we're working through those and one of our health providers, we may be doing some of those vaccinations on site. Once we reach on through that, we're into the congregate shelters and those staffing, sort of would be. And then really, it's down to some inspections, and then we're trying to figure out, we really hope by the time it gets down to the jail population, we have an allocation of Johnson &amp; Johnson. We know within that population of the transition that occurs, expecting them to be around for a second dose probably isn't necessarily possible in many cases, so we've kind of worked with that. We're looking at disparate populations. We're actually going Thursday morning to the Warming Shelter. We want to get the homeless population protected. We realized having to do the two doses, we need to get that started now, because they usually close the end of April. So we need to get that second dose in before they're kind of dispersed across the community. And then next week, we're actually doing one at Mary Trellia. They work a lot with the non-English underserved populations, and we think that's one of those areas that is probably not real receptive to the current way we've delivered. So we are challenged with some of that to be able to get about 10% to say our effort working towards that. So those are some of our focuses. The main thing is, as vaccine becomes more available, we'll continue to provide it. Our healthcare systems have not elected to receive it yet because they like this community approach that we're doing with all the people onboard, and we think that's been very productive. The other part of it is, is that be able, hopefully within the next week to two, be able to send you a link with a video overview of what we've done with these clinics, because we think it's important to have it documented and to share, because we are one of the only sites in the state doing mass clinics on this capacity. And so we'll just kind of share those plans and sort of that template with that. So that's kind of what we've been working on, and I guess any questions anyone has?
What about the rural folks? You're gonna do?
What we did with the rural folks to begin with is, we actually went out to every rural school district, and we offered it fully to every school staff member is what it was. In addition to that, we asked them to open up and we created the appointments. So for example, if we went out to a school district that had 80 school staff that wanted, we asked them to recruit 80, 65 and older the population to get them in. So we've actually finished it at Sergeant Bluff Luton, Westwood, Lawton Bronson, and Woodbury Central. And on Tuesday, Wednesday, the 16th, we're going out and we'll be finishing at River Valley. So we have done some of that in the rural area, and we'll kind of see when we open up, you know, we've considered and tried to figure out, but that's kind of our initial foray into that. And what we really wanted to look was that 65 and older population, especially some of the older ones. We didn't want to present them with the challenges of coming to a downtown clinic. We just knew mobility. They're proud. They'll transport themselves. We just knew that could lead to some other complications. But yes, we have done that as far as initial outreach.
Are you familiar with Connections Area Agency on Aging?
Yes.
I understand they're trying to help those folks that are maybe out there by themselves get in.
Right. Last I talked with them, they talked about 21 case managers, or clients with case managers, is what they focused on, and I think they provided some assistance to that, but we've also asked them for what other suggestions or ideas to be up.
That's good. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you for your time.
Item three, approval of the agenda. Do I get a motion?
Move it.
Motion by Monson, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Items four through 11 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the March 2nd meeting. Five, approval of claims. Item six, county auditor. Approval of liquor license application for Anthem Golf Course in Anthem, Iowa. Item seven, juvenile detention. Received juvenile detention February population report. Item eight is human resources. Approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Item nine, board administration. Approval of lifting tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item 10 is Community Action Agency of Souland. Approved the reappointment of Mark Monson as the SW Rural Representative and Shelley Sorensen as the Financial Representative for the Community Action Agency Board of Directors.
I would ask that one to be pulled out so I can abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Removing item 10 from the consent agenda. Mr. Gill? Okay. Item 11 is secondary roads. Approval of utility permit for installation of fiber optic cable in County Rightof Way, south of Correctionville for Lumen, also known as Century Link.
Jean Logan wanted me to pass along that she's sorry she's not here. She had a death in the family yesterday.
Her condolences. Any other issues with the consent agenda as proposed, with the exception of item 10 for Mr. Monson?
I will move the consent agenda.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. County auditor. Approved 10,000 from Gaming to remodel the auditor's office.
Michelle Scaff, Deputy Auditor. What we're here today to present to you is a proposal to remodel the auditor's office in a small way. One of the reasons that this has come to your attention is because of COVID. We tried to space ourselves six feet from each other, and we found that the finance area is relatively close to each other. If you look at this rough draft of our proposal, and if you look at Station 5 and 6, currently, that's half of the finance side. We actually have, I don't have a before picture, but we have four positions clustered right there. So to meet the six-feet requirement, so we can remain working through the COVID events, we actually sat kitty-corner from each other and moved one individual from Station 6 to a station that would no longer be there. So what we looked at is the space in the back of the auditor's office is kind of underutilized. We have a large, it's called the Unity Room for Elections, that's in the corner opposite the board office there. And what I'm proposing is that we move the finance part of the auditor's office to this back section of the auditor's office by using the same furniture and equipment that we currently have. I did meet with IT, we spoke with Elections, and we've worked together to come up with this proposal. Also met with Kenny in Building Services to try to assess, is there going to be a large cost to this? What are we going to run into possibly for costs? So we do believe there's going to be a small amount of expenses for IT, which would all be through WCICC. They may need to hire somebody to come in and pull some more data cables through. And then there'll be some building services costs, possibly carpeting for missing pieces that may be under large equipment that will be moved. So for the elections side, that Station 4 on this map is the Unity Room. That would be moved to the corner where there's a very, very large piece of equipment that is currently being, it's kind of obsolete. They store all of the elections cards in there, and it's, how tall would you say that is, Steve?
It's about 12 feet tall.
It's a very, and they used to use it for medical, like note cards, things like that. It rotates. Right now, they're emptying it out, scanning everything, so everything's becoming electronic. So that large piece of furniture or equipment, whatever you want to call it, is no longer going to be used. So we'll be removing that, and where that is, we'd be putting the Unity Room, which is a locked, secure room for elections. Item 6 here that's in front of that is a printer that the Elections Department uses, and they'd actually contain that. I believe that we've talked about containing that within that Unity Room, so it'll be a more secure location to print the ballots and such and private, so that the public will come in and see ballots being printed or have access to where that printer is. Station 1 would be where I would be moving from, currently, I'm in Station 5, so you can see there's a little larger area. If you've ever seen my desk, you know it's mounds of papers, and it's very messy. I have a lot of work, and there's not a lot of space to organize it in. So I think it'll give me a little bit more room to be able to be a little bit more organized. Station 2, we have, we're currently in the process of hiring a new finance clerk, so the new finance clerk would sit at that station. And Station 3 is the current finance clerk, which will give her a little bit of a larger area to work also. All of these will be equipped with computers, scanners, and the current equipment that we have. Station 5 and 6 would be used for the elections temps, which currently, they work on kind of desks that are set up in the back area. So now they'd be more within the area of all of the elections teams. So the elections team would be all encompassed in this front area. The ones that aren't marked here is the current configuration, so none of that would change. And that would accommodate the two elections clerks and the elections deputy, as well as during the high-peak times, they could have up to five comfortable positions for the elections temps that come in. So that is the proposal, and I'd entertain any questions you have, if you want me to go into any more detail about anything that we've talked through right now. This is a very rough draft. I know Kenny's worked on a more official document that this is relatively to scale, but since it was made by us non-architect people, you know, there may be a few flaws in it.
Station 5, is that that big rolodex?
Station 5 is-
Four. Excuse me.
That, if you walk straight to the back of the auditor's office, there's a door, and it actually looks like a room back there. Those are actually like mobile walls, like made out of the same stuff that makes up our cubicles, only they're probably, I would say, what, seven or eight?
Do you still have that big rolodex?
That's what will be removed. That's what they're working on scanning and getting rid of everything in there.
Lectrever.
Yes, Lectrever.
Oh, excuse me.
So if anybody needs one in their garage, come on and remove it, and you're welcome to it.
I tried to sell it to Matthew.
Right.
Any other questions or comments for the auditor's office? I will move approval of 10,000 coming from Gaming.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung. Any last questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That puts us right at 4:45 for, we got two of them somehow on this first, on this round, but let's go with Dennis Butler, since he's on there at number 13. Public hearing and approval of proposed maximum tax levy.
Unnecessary required to have this public hearing here. This is the maximum levy we will be asking for. This can be changed at the public hearing, which I anticipate will be changed lower, but for the time being, we want to go through this process. We did not go above the 2%, so it's only takes a simple majority instead of a supermajority. We end up at 1.90% on general fund and 1.98% on the rural basic. So it's kind of key to keep your base up there, because they use this base for the next year's base. So with this all said, this, all we have to do is approve this today, and then we move to the public hearing, which we'll send out for publication tomorrow. So it's in the paper in time for our hearing. I think it's February, or I mean, March 30th or 20th, something like that, but we have plenty of time to get it in.
So what do we do first? Public hearing?
We are in a public hearing now.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in a public hearing now, if there's any pros and cons against or for.
Well, if we kept it under the maximum levy with the work that we did, not trying to pat ourselves on the back, but that was substantial for the items that we're facing this year, so.
Because this levy is when we landed after several weeks of a bunch of the government, which is a bunch of talks, correct?
Correct. Since January through middle of February, we also preserved our reserves to keep them intact, which right now is kind of important with the situations we're in.
Need a motion to go out?
I was just gonna say, is there any other input from anybody from the public on the, for the public hearing? Hearing none, I will move that we close the public hearing. Motion by DeWitt, second by Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
All move approval?
Motion by Ung.
Second.
Second by Monson. Any final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Good job, all.
Yes.
In our next public hearing, it'll be March 30th, which will be our big one.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. 4:45, do we have Community and Economic Development Ordinance and Zoning District MAP Amendment to Rezone GIS Partial Lending in 004, owned by Gil Homes Irrevocable Trust to Agricultural Estates? We are in a public hearing now for this topic. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on the approval of this reading?
Chairman, this is Director, Community Economic Development Director David Gleiser. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
I would just remind the board and anyone in the public that this application to rezone is being facilitated basically to help a three-sibling trust split an 8.8 acre parcel. It's currently in an agricultural preservation zoning district, and our zoning ordinance only allows two houses per quarter-quarter in the AP zoning district, and that's why they're requesting this to be changed to agricultural estates. It does match with our future land use map from 2005, so it is in an area that we did believe back in 2005 we'd see more population density, and staff has recommended approval, and obviously, the board has approved this last year. I would also recommend that we waive the third public hearing, subject to any public testimony today, but since we have not had any comment against this action, I would recommend to the board that we waive the third reading and move to adopt the ordinance today upon the second reading.
Is there any other public input? Hearing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Do we have an approval motion for the second reading?
I'll move to waive the rules to do the third reading.
Yeah, we are still on-
We didn't, we had to do the-
Second and third, so I'll move the second and third reading.
Motion by Radig. Second by DeWitt. Any further comments or input? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. We good? Thank you. Item 15, Board of Supervisors. Approval of the Chairman to sign the engagement letter provided by the Office of the Auditor of State of Iowa. Mr. Zung or Monson, do you have anything?
Well, I think this needs to move along and get done. Sooner the better.
This is regarding concerns that Chairman DeWitt brought up in a previous meeting involving events in the previous year at administration. After an internal review group met a few times and discussed the issues and looked at what we had as far as documentation, at least Monson and I are making the recommendation to move forward on engaging the State Auditor's Office to conduct a third-party review. The one thing I know is needing to be revised in the letter is a range of dates that we would come to some understanding on to spell that out. And in the agenda item, I'll just restate something in here. In regards to the cost, should the board deem this cost worthwhile to conduct this? It is essentially the cost to assuage the public's concern that any review being conducted internally would not adequately resolve the issue. And that's where I think this board's responsibility is, regardless of how the issue was brought or how it was discussed. We have a responsibility to show some progress to the public on this and make sure that we're giving all parties a fair hearing, so to speak. And I think it's in everyone's best interest, we'd all agree, to get a resolution as much as can be had on this issue. The letter does have some particular verbiage that I would just reiterate is standard language from the state office, so this is more or less a, like I said, an engagement letter with some boilerplate language on how they would conduct a review and issue a report. That's all I have.
Okay.
Sheriff Sheehan, I spoke with Matthew last week. The concern that I have is the payment of the auditor's fees. Our budget does not have any money built into it, so I guess I would just like to go on record and say that we don't have any money in our budget to cover a 10, or 15, or 20, or whatever $1,000 bill this may be from the auditor's office. So I'm just asking for some assurance that if whatever those funds are to conduct the audit would not come out of our budget, and they would come out of county funds.
Or do we have a liability fund or something like that there, Dennis?
I'm not sure you can use that. Normally, you pay any special audits out of basically the regular audit line under the Board of Supervisors. In this case here, we'd have to amend our budget by May. If that's going to take place this fiscal year, and then we probably, in this case, it's a one-time deal, use cash reserves. Because you got a limit of anywhere from 5,000 to 30,000, so depends how long it takes. That's what we probably should do.
I know, and there was, and I don't want to speak for the county attorney, but there was some communication back and forth with the State Auditor's Office on modifying some language. I had brought up some concerns to outside counsel, and because of our scheduling, we weren't able to meet last week. We did meet yesterday, and you know, would just, hopefully, we wouldn't sign anything until the language that we're hoping will be corrected, can be corrected. And then the, again, mostly, it's just the budgeting or the finance of it.
You brought up using outside counsel. Have you incurred cost?
No.
No?
Is this, I guess I'm curious what the, what the language is. Do you want to discuss that in an open meeting, or?
I'll let, I mean, the concerns that I, I mean, I brought a couple of concerns to PJ was, Mr. Jennings, was just the broad scope of the language of the agreement and then the payment. There was some discussion when we had met during our internal review group that maybe the county would not incur any costs under certain statutes. The outside counsel, his advice was that it was pretty clear that the county was going to be billed for the audit. And so those were the concerns that I brought forward, and then PJ had some, or Mr. Jennings, sorry, had some additional concerns that he had brought forward, so I'll let him-
Appreciate it, Sheriff. PJ Jennings, County Attorney's Office. I believe most of my concerns were addressed by Supervisor Ung when he talked about the boilerplate language contained in the agreement. Those were my concerns. You had some fraud language in there. You had some allegations and those kinds of things. And based on the responses back from the auditor's office, those are just boilerplate language that they include in all of these engagement letters, and so basically, we can't take it out. I just wanted to make it clear in an open process here that no one is alleging that any fraud has occurred. We're just trying to make sure that we're transparent on this and get it right. And if we need to make any changes, we can make those changes. But this will become a public document once it is signed, and so that language will be in there. So if you guys ask any questions by whomever, no one at this point is alleging any fraud. And that was the biggest word that I had the problem with. But again, that's boilerplate language, and we can't control that, so. The other thing, and I think Sheriff talked about, was the timeline. We're looking at a three-to-five-year period, so it will be over a three-year period, but the ability that if they have to go beyond that, it will be up to a maximum of five years, with the possibility that if it goes any further than that, which I can't imagine that it would, they would then come back at that point, and we would request an amended agreement to do it anything further. But I just don't see that being a real possibility, so.
And just for everyone to be aware, isn't it true that it's required to do this in an open session as far as engaging with the auditor's office, because this is the method they-
Correct.
They want this to be done, so.
There's nothing secret about it. It's all transparent, State Auditor's Office. We will be obtaining the results ahead of time before that final document is released to the public. But again, that document will be released to the public at some point, so.
So the document that we have is not the final form of the document? There's still some changes in the-
The document that you have right now, which is the engagement letter, there will be a few changes, specifically the duration period that we're looking at, or the look-back period. But the rest of the language will primarily be the same as what you're addressing here now. But because we will be adding that duration or that look-back period, we will not be asking the chairperson to sign this particular document, just to approve that we will be signing this document.
Once final.
Correct. Correct.
How long do you anticipate that this is going to take to get this language back?
My hope is that we will have this language back and the corrected or the redraft of this document will be sent to us yet this week.
Okay.
I would make a motion that the chair be able to sign this agreement with the one change, and that's duration, right?
The motion will be just to sign the letter of engagement.
Well, but he wants to make one change in what we're looking at.
Right.
And I wouldn't leave it as one change. I would just, with any changes added to it, because they may just reword it based on my questions. Because I asked them maybe just to reword some stuff. Maybe not change it, but just to reword it. But that's up to them.
Okay, that's my motion.
But there won't be any significant modifications to change the substance of the agreement. That's the bottom line.
A letter of engagement.
Correct.
I'll second. And just so we're clear, since this is to be signed by the board, chair, and also the sheriff, is their agreement as of today as far as the three-to-five-year period among all parties?
I believe so. That's the period. We talked with the sheriff's office, and I'm hopeful that the board is okay with that look-back period.
Okay.
Motion by Munson, second by Ung. Any further questions for the sheriff or the county attorney? Any other comments?
No, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass is five to zero. Reports on committee meetings.
I had one on Friday. Third Judicial District Department of Corrections. She sent the information to Mark Sebersma in Sioux County, so I didn't get it. And I missed it.
Too many Marks.
Too many Marks.
So that means you've got really nothing to say.
I got nothing to say.
Mr. Radig, anything?
I had a couple of SIMCO meetings, but nothing really to report to the board here as far as what happened.
Okay. You look sad that you don't have anything to say, Matt.
Oh, it's... Bummer town.
Round two of citizen concerns. Any issues not on the agenda that someone would like to address? Please approach and tell us who you are and what your address is.
Okay, I'm Pat Benjamin. You're going to have to speak up then, harder.
Okay.
I guess there's a problem with my mailbox.
Okay.
They want me to move it? Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Nero, would you have any input for that?
All mailbox supports, if I can, I'll breathe out. All mailbox supports and any devices within the right-of-way that were within the clear zone of the road are required to be on a breakaway mounting. This one is in a large tree trunk. It's decorative, it's pretty, but it does not meet the standards required for an appurtenance that's that close to the edge of the roadway. We've sent a number of notices. The last one I sent by regular mail, which apparently got the last letter that we sent.
Well, I never got your first letter.
Well, the post office kept returning them. The, we finally just sent one by regular mail, so. There is a deadline of March fifteenth for that to be moved. We moved three brick mailboxes last year in the town of Climbing Hill that were placed in, you know, in similar locations out there. There's also a large boulder there that, you know, if somebody lost control of their vehicle and left the roadway, that would also be a hazard to a vehicle. The idea is that things that are within the right-of-way need to be on a breakaway support or need to be something that will not stop the vehicle and cause catastrophic results for the car and the passengers within it. Board is, has a duty, as a matter of fact, and our county attorney can go on to the meeting of that to remove obstructions within the right-of-way, and these by examination are obstructions.
This is under Iowa code, correct?
Yeah, three eighteen point two, or three eighteen point four. I can't remember which one it is, but...
How many feet does it extend from the road?
It's probably six feet off the edge line.
How, what do you call a boulder?
There's, it should be a picture there. There's a...
Is that a boulder or is that a rock?
Doesn't matter whether it's a boulder or a rock. It's big enough that if a car hit it, it would bring that car to a catastrophic stop.
That's a boulder.
All right. I'm not going to argue on the definition of a boulder or a rock, but it is large enough that it could cause damage to a car that left the roadway.
I was asking how far from the road is, you know, does the right-of-way extend in this case?
Our right-of-way out there is over sixty feet.
Okay.
We do allow mailboxes within the right-of-way on an appropriate support that will not cause damage to a car that strikes it. We're required especially to be careful within a clear zone of the road. Clear zones vary between ten and seventeen feet depending on the classification of the roadway. Out here on a road like this where it's a major collector, fourteen feet would be the typical clear-zone area. That would be the area to find the area where a car can recover without seeing significant damage.
There's some writing on the back of the two photos, let's say, ten feet for the mailbox and twelve for the rock. Is that from the road? Is that a distance from there?
From the center, the edge of the white line to the mailbox is ten feet.
Edge of the white line.
And there's a culvert, right, in front of the mailbox. After you drive by it, a guy could drop off into it. And also, there's two other mailboxes out there.
Are these, have you seen these, Mark?
Typically, when we get one, we get a bunch. The last three we did at Climbing Hill, we got seven more by complaints. So we would address each of those if we have an address for it.
Okay.
If they, if they don't meet requirements. We don't patrol for this regularly, but we do address them when we find them or receive a complaint like this and the others. So we'll definitely take a look at them, send out letters.
So in essence, we're asked by the state to enforce the code.
That's correct, yes.
So...
So what's the code on parked vehicles?
Those have also been addressed with a, if you're talking about the guy at the corner, he received a letter also, so.
And I got a cop.
Yep, he has a time wherein he can get those moved. If he needs, if he fails to make that time, the county will remove them.
I'll go back to the...
Joshua's aware of both of this one. We've been working with him on this area, as is Dan Priestley. Our three departments are working to address the vehicles. Mostly have been there since 2014, according to the area photos.
Climbing Hill?
Yes.
And as county-elected officials, we're bound by Iowa code. And yeah, I totally agree with all your points, but as far as who to lobby to change it or to maybe make them change their mind on the enforcement side of it, it would be the state legislature that affects Iowa code.
I moved my house in there in ninety-four. I put a retaining wall up, and Dick Storm said that they was going to put a culvert to that road, and they never did. That's twenty years ago. And that's worse than the mailboxes. And my mailbox is only point zero five tenths from the stop sign to the mailbox. So you're coming to a stop sign and then you're taking off, going on.
Well, again, we're forced to...
What's the regulation of the riches? You guys worry about the people's safety. There's a guardrail.
You're asking me to make the safety rules? I'm not. That is not. That is the state. I don't, I can't argue...
This is Woodbury County.
That still has to be done within state regulations.
So, I mean, you talk about dangers, that's...
Well, as Mr. Radig said, if the best thing you can do is lobby the state, the DOT and the state, because we're just forced to enforce what is put in front of us. They give us the rules and tell us to enforce them. We don't, we don't get to make the rules.
So how far off can I put the mailbox?
There's the man right there.
That particular mailbox doesn't belong anywhere within the right-of-way, as far as I'm concerned. Your mailbox needs can be accommodated on a breakaway post. That's the stance we have taken with everybody who's had a noncompliant mailbox. It can be a four-by-four post, a three-pound steel post inside of a plastic sleeve. There are any number of legal mailbox configurations that can be placed within the right-of-way. That does not belong anywhere within county property on the right-of-way. Yes, we have other issues. The retaining wall is something I'm not liking either, but it has been there for quite some time. Yeah, I have to look at the history of that.
But that stump is sitting on a pallet.
It's sitting on what? That stump, how much is the stump weighing?
Well, you can have your mailbox there from what I'm, from what I understand. Your mailbox can be there, it just has to be on a breakaway post.
Okay, if I move mine, all these others will be removed, then?
Well, as he said, we don't go out, the county doesn't go out and patrol or survey for these, but...
If you have the online...
If we have the addresses, we will go out and we will address each of them.
Southway Borough.
Okay.
Mark, if he had a hollow log, would that be considered a post?
It's not a post.
It's not what he just described as a...
Again, the area that's been determined, University of Texas TTI did a number of supports on, or a number of research studies on mailbox posts. What they found was that with an eighteen-hundred-pound car, the maximum post that could be broken by that car without a catastrophic deceleration by the car was the basic four-by-four wood post. We've even gone out in areas where we had wood posts and drilled those at four inches above the ground and eighteen inches above the ground, roughly that bumper zone, to assure that we had reduced those signposts even in section to the point where they would be breakaway standards. We've left the wood posts behind at this point. We're using steel posts out there for signposts that fracture and fall down with very little deceleration in the car. Imagine, if you've driven our roads, you see what we're now using. Those meet the requirements of, I think it was NCHRP 350, which was the study that the federal government implemented and is placed before the states that requires that those, everything we can move within the right-of-way, our choices are to move it so it's no longer obstruction, to protect it with things like guardrail, to reduce the level of damage that can occur, or we put it on a breakaway post. Signs are pretty simple for us to do that, and we've made that investment at county.
So the flip side of this, if somebody hit that post, that stump, got hurt, they'd sue the county?
They would sue the county. And then I would recommend that we would sue the landowner and bring them right in with us.
But we're first.
We're first, yeah. We're always the deep pocket.
Yep.
So what if I put a guardrail up?
You can't build things within the county right-of-way without a permit from the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, can I get a permit?
No. I would not recommend a permit for a guardrail at a location where a guardrail is needed. A guardrail is still a hazard within the right-of-way. We put them on bridge approaches because we have a worse hazard there with that square end on that bridge end. But the guardrail itself is still a potential hazard for folks. But we put them out there because we're trying to protect them from a worse problem, which might be a hole, which might be a ditch. There's any number of things where, before we put a guardrail in, I mean, this gets to be a long discussion on design standards, but we don't put guardrail in protecting people from something worse.
What about putting a culvert in there?
That culvert would have to be looked at in regard to the rest of our five-year construction program. The likely time where that would occur would be when we redo the Movel Blacktop and resurface it. Whenever we go out and do a resurfacing project, two years ahead of that project, we typically go out, we look at all the crossroad culverts. We replace those that are in need of replacement at that time.
This was twenty years ago. They told me that it's going to be...
Richard's no longer sitting in the county engineer's chair. And we haven't done any work to speak of on Movel Blacktop. It's not even in the five-year program.
Well, you fixed that hole.
Yep. We are required to maintain the roads that we have out there. We're required to patch potholes. We do things like seal cracks. We do regular maintenance on all of our road system. But when we're talking about replacing a culvert, that's a construction project that has to be programmed because it exceeds fifty thousand dollars. At this point in time, it is not high enough in our priorities to replace that culvert.
Well, if it's dangerous, it shouldn't be forever.
Well...
What about these holes on 141? They're just, I mean, that far off the highway, then the culvert just dropped right off. You worry about bicycle water damage.
That's the road we inherited from DOT. One of the design exceptions we have in chapter, I think it's six sixty-eight of the code, is immune from a lawsuit for something that was designed to the correct standard at the time that it was built. This prevents counties and cities and the state from having to constantly go through a redesign and rebuild on all of their roads every time the federal design standards change. In the case of this culvert, at the time it was built, I have to believe that the board and the county engineer at that time approved a set of plans. At that point in time, DOT would have had review requirements on it. And that at the time it was built, it met those design standards, which protects us from lawsuit where negligent design is alleged. Now, again, that's why we address these things when we do a resurfacing project. We go out, we check the road we're going to be improving to make sure that we don't have hazards. Culverts that need to be extended or replaced. So that, one of the worst things we can do is resurface the road, make it beautiful. Next year, come back in and replace a culvert and tear up that brand-new road surface.
For example, Correctionville Road. Correctionville Road, you went and did the bridges, culverts and that kind of stuff?
Right. We extended a number of those between, what was it?
Pretty much Buchanan all the way to...
Down to Sioux City. Before we did the work. We did the same thing on D-38, where we replaced three or four of the culverts under there, extended them as well. So again, that is done in the course of other work.
Now, I hate to say that I absolutely agree with you, that I don't like it. And I think it's stupid that you're only allowed to have ugly mailboxes. But it's not a law we can change here. It's a state law. And I understand why they did what they did because it's about traffic safety. But at the same time, you know, I like having a nice-looking mailbox, too.
And I'm hearing that you want the rules applied evenly to everybody else. You don't want to be said, I don't have to deal with something if others are not being held to the same standard.
Somebody else that was probably in your shoes pointed out yours and sent it to him. Somebody else that was in your shoes getting a letter probably also sent yours to him. So that's, that's how most of them get flagged, is from when one guy gets flagged, he shows, well, what about all these guys? And then all those are flagged. So that's, that's how most of them end up flagged. So, that's, that's how most of them end up flagged, that's probably how you got flagged.
So, maintaining operators gotta write down all the mailboxes and they go by them once a week.
Uh, you can, if you wanna do that.
Big Glenn Allen's got vervele ties. There's more guys, Bronson Blacktop's got vervele ties. They just did that road under mailboxes.
And I, I mean.
Then that, they're probably next.
If you wanna, if you wanna give them the addresses, he's gotta send them all a letter.
Bronson Blacktop, he had to see them because they just blacktopped that road last year. My guy's got two of them.
I'll look at Bronson Blacktop as well.
That's from Bronson, uh, Mobile Blacktop.
Correct, that's what I assumed you were talking about. Did the board have any other questions before I duck off?
I don't think so.
Frost gone out of the road yet?
Pardon me?
Frost gone out of the road yet?
It's still coming out. It's pretty thin right now, so, as long as we don't have another cold snap, we're starting to shape things up. It's, it's too early to tell for sure. I, I wanna knock wood when I say that things don't look horrible right now.
I do gotta compliment you on the sheer amount of Iowa code that you have memorized around your position.
I hate to say that, but that's a sign that I've been sued occasionally.
Well, thank you for being here, Mark.
I never missed a budget, or I try and never miss a budget here, so. When I say I was on the agenda, I came even though I didn't have much on the agenda.
Any other citizen concerns? Board concerns?
Yes.
Sir?
Um, I don't know if this is a question for Mark or Kenny, uh, but I got a, a call a couple minutes before this meeting from a, um, I think it was from an out-of-state guy, Brandon with Mid-American, said that they need, uh, uh, they dropped a pin and the address came up as twenty-six oh one Franklin Avenue. There's a padlock they can't get through in order to trim some, some stuff around high-power lines. Could I get with one of you guys to?
Twenty-six oh one Franklin?
Yeah.
I'll write it down and you'll have, I'll get somebody on it.
All right. I'll pass the number on to you after the meeting.
Say I got bolt cutters if you.
What's that?
Said I got bolt cutters if you need them.
Break into our own place?
Oh, that's our property?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
That's what it was represented as.
Well, Franklin Avenue is.
That's way downtown.
Um, twenty-six oh one would probably be north of Deer Run Trail. Uh, Franklin Avenue would be, uh, west of the Mobile Blacktop, just to give you an idea where it sits.
Can you tell us exactly where it's at, Chief Winger? Because we know you're, know the county like the back of your hand. South and east of here? Of course, most everything in Iowa is east of here, but. Trying to help you.
He does, yeah, he said right where the pond is and everything, I'm looking at it.
Any other board concerns?
Yeah, I don't know if we bring up, you know, the discussion on, uh, tabling or pushing back the, the bidding process on the jail. I know we got Kenny here and Dennis here. Uh, I'm a little fear, fearful of doing that. I don't see inflation as something that's gonna go down but up. I think with EPA regulation, pledged regulation of the concrete industry, it's gonna drive those prices up and not down. Uh, I do understand that most residential building and construction costs go down in around September eighth, uh, or August, September, uh, October. I, I just really worry that, uh, if we don't move now, we may not get it done. I, from what I understand, I've been talking with one of our state legislators, uh, they think that our coronavirus aid from the federal bill last, last time is gonna be higher than what it was last time, so, uh, that could help offset a couple, anywhere from two to three million, maybe four million. And there's a very good opportunity to potentially lobby the state for anything we come up with else, uh, with shortcomings, uh, out of their one-point-three billion in aid they're getting, so. Uh, and I, I understand, you know, why decisions are made, but, uh, I just am very fearful that, uh, I think prices are gonna go the other direction.
As our minds speaking, as a member of the authority, it, it is very concerning because, yeah, I share your, your ideas that inflation never seems to go down.
Right.
Um, we, I, I guess I'll just say this for the moment, Ke, Keith, is that between Kenny, Dennis, Goldberg Group, Baker Group, the rest of the authority, I don't believe this is me speaking for the authority, but be assured that we are doing everything we can and looking for every avenue that we can. And there is, with the exception of those two gentlemen sitting over there, I don't think there's anybody that wants this law enforcement center built more than me.
Right.
It, it, it's obviously needed, it's not gonna, the, the, the issue with the, uh, the gem across the street is not gonna go away or diminish. We are looking at every possible avenue that we can. Obviously, we have Mr. Butler, that's the wizard on things financial, working on this, according to Justin, of course, that. So, we are, like I said, it, we are doing everything we possibly can and looking at, Dennis is crunching the numbers on a daily basis, if not more often than that.
We're in it.
We, there, there is noth, there is no, there is nothing that says that we are tabling this indefinitely at this, at this point. We are, we're, we're doing our best to move forward.
The problem, if we do bid it out, the authority can not take the bids and then we've raised our level of bids up to a certain level. The problem is, we need to have our ducks in a row as authority and the county board of supervisors of where this money's coming from before we accept any bids because you will never sell a bond until we have guarantees that the money's gonna be there to finish the project.
Well, and that's where, you know, and you got a call coming up. I think we do need to establish, can we use this coronavirus aid? If we get three million, if we get four million, can that go all to this project? If we sell that farm, can we put that all to this project? So, if we get a bid of forty-eight million when we were expecting forty-three.
That's an issue I think we're gonna have to talk with our bonding attorney because it's a bond issue and now you're talking about something separate, but that is being looked at.
Right.
And I think besides our bonding attorney, we need to discuss it with Joshua because he's representing the board of supervisors too.
Right.
So, we will have Joshua involved on this also.
So.
We have a call with Jason tomorrow morning for the authority side of it to see if it's even feasible and I do wanna visit with Joshua also on this. There's some possibilities, you know, if we can do this, it's gotta be rem, memorandum of understanding, something that's binding. If, say, the county does advance money to authority, the authority will pay it back. We first gotta find out if they legally can do it.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of at a point with, now that we have part of the money sitting here, that's kinda painted us into a corner as far as how we can proceed, so, yes, it's an authority concern as well.
Right. I just wanted to discuss it a little 'cause, you know, I.
No, that's.
And I'm not pointing figures or, you know.
No, we have open meetings on the authority as well and it's, and it's.
We, we.
Between.
We aren't the only county. Warren County had the same situation where they had a price, came four or five million more than they even had the money for and they worked it out.
We're in.
Coronavirus, with the materials, supply and demand, embargoes, tears, everything else, we're really victims of circumstance. That's where the federal money with coronavirus on this, this latest building path could help us tremendously. We do have some people looking into it to see possibly if they interpret how much we might get back.
And if we can use it.
I've, I've been talking with one of our state legislators on the potential to receive funding from the state. Uh, he says it's very difficult typically to get funding from the state on stuff like this, but at the same time, if we can get with the governor or the right people, um, I think we have a very good shot at, at this because it's a very unique situation. Uh, we had a bond issue pass, we had all the engineering done that, you know, would give us those estimates and because of coronavirus, the material costs are way higher. And the virus didn't cause the prices to go up, but having everybody at home bored out of their wits with nothing to do, they tore up their house and did a project and more people are building because of low interest rates. And you have lower than ever supply of wood and steel and materials that are needed, so those costs have to jump up. So, uh, I think it's a very clear issue where because of coronavirus, these bids could come in substantially higher and this is something that I think coronavirus aid is intended to help fund. So, I think if we can make that case clear to the governor's office and the state legislature, uh, 'cause there's probably not too many bond issues that passed in the last year and that are trying to build right now. In fact, I, you know, I don't know of any others in the whole state, so I think we have a very good chance of lobbying to, to get that kind of help from the state.
Just, uh, talking with, uh, Chief Winger, just wanna give you assurance and I know Rocky's probably well aware, but, uh, we, we are doing what we can to, um, without getting into much detail, behind the scenes, working different, um, angles that we can as far as, uh, dealing with, uh, different federal agencies and, and discussing options with them. And just give you the assurance that the, the authority is, is definitely doing everything, I think, we're, we're very confident that they're doing everything that they can to try and get this thing across the finish line. But as you were talking, I, I mentioned to Winger that maybe, uh, maybe tomorrow I'll try to make some, uh, make a couple phone calls to some, even some federal representatives and, and see if there's anything that they can guide us on to find a way to get this across the finish line because you brought up, you know, Chairman DeWitt brings up the point that the thing across the street's not going away regardless.
Right, well, and now those estimates of repairs for that building.
I would assume have even gone up.
Absolutely, so, that's even scarier.
There's, there's no desire or stomach for reducing the size or changing the footprint of that because almost anything we do now, especially if we bid it out and they, as Dennis said, if we do it out and don't take the bids, then we have to make a substantial change to that footprint because the, the state protects the bidders. I'm probably not getting this completely right, but we're looking at it.
The problem is we don't have a figure or an exact number yet to take it to other people as well, so.
Uh, the fear is if we were to send this out for bid now, um, everything that we've been told and, uh, we've asked many different groups, uh, what their thoughts are on the material pricing. From what we're being told is materials are at an all-time high, um, that are unprecedented and they expect, all of these people are expecting these prices to go down. However, uh, again, it's gonna be driven by COVID and how quickly, uh, factories and other things recover from that because that is, uh, a, a big part of the material problem right now and, and driving those costs. If we did send this out for bid now, there's two problems with that. One, it sets a precedence, um, and it's not something you wanna do when you bid a project. In other words, you hate to go back and rebid. Um, it sets a precedence on the dollar figure so everyone else knows everyone else's bids. And so, it sets a precedence on what the price is gonna be. Uh, the second part of that problem, um, which is probably even more greater, uh, in our situation, um, is that if we were to send out for bids and it came in overpriced and we couldn't afford it, uh, we have already valued engineer, value engineered this project down to where we can't, uh, take anything more out of it. In other words, there is no cush in this building. There's no, uh, polished brass faucets or anything like that. We have value engineered this down to get the price down, uh, all along. We've been doing that and so there is no place to cut. And the other problem that's twofold with that is now if you can't afford it and the bids came in too high and you have to rebid it, and Joshua can probably help with this, you have to, in order to send that out for bid again, you have to change the project by ten percent. Uh, ten percent of a forty-eight-million-dollar project is quite a bit. That's a pretty good-sized change, uh, with somewhere where you already know you have no value engineering to turn to, so, thanks.
We're doing what we can with what we have. We've already got the sheriff and the chief sharing a card table and two folding chairs because, uh, taking away Tony's computer. Any other board concerns?
Auctioning off all the commemorative coins on eBay.
Oh, yeah.
Pass gonna pitch in the Lake Trever.
Before this gets worse, we are adjourned.